She is on, let me, I will, there she is.
I will call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting, City of American Canyon, August 16, 2022. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you all, please be seated. Real call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Abadamos.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Moving on in our agenda, report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilmembers, the public, you convened an open session at 14:05 PM to address the matters that agenda is for closed session consideration, after determining that there were no comments on the matters that had been asked for closed session consideration. You did so, you completed closed session consideration at 6:12 PM for the matters agenda is, and I will prepare a written report.
I can't hear anything.
Of section 51, I can step up.
One. Okay.
There we go.
I'll start over. You convened an open session at 4:35 PM in ascertaining that there were no comments from the public on matters agenda is for closed session consideration. You then went into closed session to address the matters that were agenda is for closed session consideration. You completed the closed session at 6:12 PM with respect to matters considered and the lack or absence or actual reportable action. I will file a written report consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section 54-957.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions. Any questions from council members? Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on this evening with our agenda, Proclamations and Presentation. Gives us great pleasure this evening to have Eagle Scout Troop 7062 Wetlands Edge Project. All right, there we are.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alexandra Iketa. I'm your Parks and Recreation Director here for the City of American Canyon. And I am here this evening to share with you the amazing work that was completed at the wetlands this past June by Zachary Bernard and his team members of Eagle Scouts Troop 7062. When Zachary first approached me in February with his community service project, I was immediately impressed with his leadership, passion for serving our community, and drive to make a positive improvement to an area that is loved by so many. Zachary's Eagle Scout project included filling in 12 uneven surfaces and installing seven professionally made directional signs throughout the Wetlands Edge Trail System. As you can see from these pictures, we had some areas throughout the trails that needed some attention and some maintenance. Zachary did all of this project on his own. He funded the project through a grant he received from PG&E, purchased the materials with the grant money he received, he solicited his own volunteers, and borrowed a few hand tools from the city. With Zachary's hard work, leadership, and drive, he and his team members handmade, painted, and installed seven directional signs and filled in 12 uneven surfaces throughout the trails. Thanks to Zachary and the Eagle Scout Troop 7062, the trail looks beautiful and the signs are a great addition that many community members will have the benefit of enjoying. At this time, I would like to invite Zachary up to the podium so he can answer any technical issues that you may, technical questions that you may have about the project, and he can better explain all the great work that he's done for us in the city.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening. I think we've known each other when you were, we're smaller.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you this evening. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure for working with the city. It was an amazing project, awesome to serve the community that I've been a part of for so long, and it's just, it's great. So, does anybody have any questions?
Well, really, thank you for the, the, all the work you've done out there, the directional signs. I've just, having worked the ground around here for a while, and I think you found out how hard it is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it takes a lot of effort to get that in, so appreciate the work.
Thank you.
So, how many, how many volunteers did you have?
For day to day, it differed. Most of the time, we had an average of about five to seven, and it was great because when you have too many workers, sometimes it could get really crowded. And so, thank you to Troop 7062 because those were the volunteers that helped me. And it was perfect because we had just the right amount, just to help. It's great.
All right. Questions from council? Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Well, appreciate it. Look forward to your court of honor.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah, with our agenda, we'll move on this evening. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Now is the time for that. Anybody who has item not on the agenda, please come to the podium, or if you have a speaker card.
Mayor Garcia, I have one speaker card received.
Okay.
William Baker.
William Baker, please. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and City Manager. My name is William Baker. I'm a homeowner and resident of American Canyon. I want to start by expressing my thanks to the Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager, and American Canyon's legal advisor for your ongoing support in opposing the City of Vallejo's Broadway project. The Broadway project is a 48-unit permanent supportive housing project for the chronically homeless slated to be built next to American Canyon's Veterans Memorial Park. As you are well aware, last week, a small group of American Canyon and Vallejo citizens filed a complaint against the City of Vallejo and the sponsors of the Broadway project under the California Environmental Equality Act, RCECA. Through the courts in Solano, the group has asked the project sponsors to provide additional information about the project. The CICA complaint mechanism is important to ensure the project complies with California's environmental regulations. Last Friday, you also received an email from me requesting a letter that will be instrumental in an ongoing administrative investigation and complaint on the City of Vallejo's flawed application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for Home Key funding. I have researched the Broadway project application process beginning in early June. I have made multiple document requests from the City of Vallejo, HCD, Home Key in Sacramento, and other government bureaus. Of the, of the documents received so far, it is becoming increasingly clear that the City of Vallejo methodically obscured the actual location of the project to HCD, and in doing so, downplayed or completely ignored the fact that the site shares a property line with the largest public park in American Canyon. At most, the land to the north of the Broadway project is noted as simply a dog park. Housing a convicted sex offender in a Home Key project sitting next to a public park is harmful to children and detrimental to tenants trying desperately to rid themselves of temptation and get on with their lives. Today, I encourage you to assist me by setting the record straight with HCD in Sacramento. The Broadway project is cited not next to a mere dog park, but Americans' larger, American Canyon's largest city park, and encourage an HCD to review the Broadway project application. I leave you with the words of a young homeless man who signed the petition presented to you in July, currently homeless, and still think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Anybody else have a very public comment not on the agenda?
I have James Sisney.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you so much. So, my name is James Sisney, actually, and I'm a resident of Vallejo also, and I am a former planning technician with the City of Vallejo for six years before I retired, and some other planning experience, too. So, I wanted to address this issue, too, with the project Home Key. Like the prior speaker, I've also done a lot of research into this, not because I'm against any homeless housing. I don't think anybody in Vallejo is against adding homeless housing, probably no one in your community is either. But there's just the question of how it's done, how it's handled, what the future's going to look like with homeless housing, where it's, where it happens to be located, and so forth. And for me, there were a lot of questions, and I tried to address that with city officials with multiple emails and so forth, and there was no response. It just feels like the city is locking down around this issue. So, it makes me wonder if there's something that they're hiding, either a decision that was made in haste or an agreement that was made that was secretive. One of the local Vallejo businesses is going to benefit from this, the one that makes modular housing is going to build the project. And there was no process, like an RFP, that's normal, where you put out a proposal and you get multiple contractors to submit counter proposals or new proposals, or new designs and so forth. Sorry, I guess I'm speaking too close. So, that's just one of the issue. Now, I've looked at all the CICA issues, and it appears that the Governor's Office or the legislature, legislature has created an opportunity for communities to move forward on this very fast, with no, no use permit required, no CICA review required, no RFP required, and so forth. So, the city is, has established a legal basis for what they've done. So, I'm not questioning that so much. I'm just questioning that there was, there seemed to be insufficient noticing to the community, insufficient involvement in the community. They used the exemptions to basically block community participation and review. And so, I and a few others are here today to try to encourage you, as a city council, and I'll finish up now, with perhaps some interest or questions of your own, to hopefully get engaged collectively, to talk, try to talk to the city and make sure that everything is in order, including how this is going to be policed, what kind of people are going to be put into the housing, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Margaret Sharkey.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Margaret Sharkey, and I'm a Vallejo resident. I have attended all of the Vallejo City Council meetings since we first became aware of this in June. Fifty-five years. A 55-year covenant is the minimum amount of time the proposed Home Key building for chronic homeless will exist in the current identified location. This is Vallejo's solution to the homeless problem, an iconic four-story modular building at the entrance to American Canyon and the wine country for 48 units. The thing to understand is, this is a brand-new four-story building that's going to be on a vacant piece of land that has absolutely no utilities. The city has an eight-month period to build it out. There are no drawings, modular construction, and this is going to happen unless the City of American Canyon engages now in the process. The most, most important thing you can do for your city and your residents is to enjoin the complaint that was filed by the attorney, David Temblador, Temblador in Sacramento, to put a pause on the current Broadway location. There's a myriad of reasons why this is not the right location, and your residents are alarmed, concerned for their property values, and their quiet enjoyment for their parks and their children's enjoyment also. I believe everyone is aware, the City of Vallejo rammed through this project without courtesy notification, without considering alternative site locations such as existing motels, hotels, or apartment buildings. These are what Home Key is all about, renovation of an existing building, and that's why CICA is exempt. So, we are in agreement, this is a very poor choice of locations outside the normal Home Key, existing building renovation for chronic homeless, and really does not meet a lot of the site criteria requirements. So, the California CICA Act says that if more than 10% of the development is going to constitute 10% or more of the improvements that presently exist on the property, then you've got to go to do a CICA. If we've got vacant land, you're obviously going to put more than 10% of the existing improvements on this site, you've got to comply with CICA. That means you've got to do an initial study. Is there a potential impact on transportation? Yes. Next to a railroad? Yes. Is there a potential impact for noise? Yes. Firm foundation, the developer has never done a project like this before. Is there an impact on public services, water, sewer, fire, police, EMT that share that border? I'm sorry, I'm going over my time. The main point is, CICA is important, and most importantly, the city must enjoin for the benefit of their residents and their community. There are better alternatives.
Ma'am, you're out of time.
No notifications were sent out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have Homer Crespo.
Good evening, welcome. Hi. Fifty-five years is a long time. You know, everybody who goes to the wine country happens to go through Highway 29, unless they go Highway 12, but all that tourists, all that traffic, are going to enjoy for 55 years a four-story building. And as an architect and planner, I used to be a Maryland planner in the 80s. So, my biggest concern besides CICA, besides everything, is how can you put such structure in such a tight piece of land, four-story? It's going to become a landmark. I think it's going to be the tallest building in American Canyon, a landmark. In New York City, when they start doing public housing, they put families in boxes. If you ask homeless, they don't want to be in a box. Boxes against boxes in an enclosed hallway with an elevator. That is the worst solution for someone who wants to be out. Get a piece of land, a bigger piece of land, separate unit, and I can't believe that this is happening in today's democracy, that they keep a project in the, in the, in the dark purposely just to benefit who knows what. And this is my problem as an architect. I know the mistake will last forever. When a patient die, maybe six months, the doctor get a bad reputation, but that will be there for 55 years. Everybody, I did a sketch, and when you're driving south, you're going to see that because in top of the big five-story building, including the parking, it's a landmark, and it has the topography, it's like 60 feet tall. It's going to be a disaster because I cannot control the families inside hanging underwear on the windows. And that is going to be enjoyment for all these people who come to the wine country. I can't believe these things are happening with the excuse that there was no other projects. There is plenty of buildings in Vallejo, but Vallejo used to be the capital, by the way. Plenty of buildings. And why? Because they want, I don't understand. Right now, there is hotels, motel, existing building, the Navy Lodge, all those buildings can be renovated. Besides, the project has no sidewalks to the city. They're going to walk on Broadway, no proximity to services. American Canyon has Broadway district plan, traffic study, and I enjoy watching and reading accurate information documented. How can you neglect your neighbor after you have a Broadway project next to a park? This is insane. You know, everybody should be irate that these kind of things are happening with the excuse to save 45 families. I don't understand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have Patricia Kruger.
Good evening, welcome. Welcome. Most of you know me. I'm Patty Kruger. I go by Patricia formerly. I'm a resident of the Lavenia Development and part of the Lavenia Lighting and Landscape District. I contacted the city 15 months ago requesting assistance of five questions. I, with all the windstorms and everything happened, a fence, a joint fence that goes along from my property as well as a maintenance road slash trail, depending on how it's defined within the city. We share that border of two fences. I requested five questions of the city, of which I know my neighbors had the fence replaced by the city on part of the, whether it was Landscape and Lighting District funds or other funds, I do not know. After 14 months, I got one question out of five of my original questions asked. I originally was responded to very quickly by the city, had a city visit, said they were going to get back to me. Didn't happen. A year later, I emailed again, went up, that was after the Landscape and Lighting District meeting, still not quite the response. Got a response saying, we'll look into it. A month later, I said, any news? I understand with COVID, I understand with staffing shortages and everything else, but after 15 months, having one question answered, I feel very let down as a city person who pays taxes that covers everyone's salary. That really frustrates me. At this point, I'm going to do a Public Records Act for the information I'm requesting from the city to try to get that. I'm happy to work with Jason or any one of his staff to try to come to a more, easier answer to this. I did look through the website. The website, all the links are down in terms of when you go to recent reports, even in terms of city council resolutions from 2020-71 to now, under the Landscape and Lighting District, there is nothing. So, it doesn't show anything that occurred in 2020, 2021, or 2022. As a taxpayer that pays $400 a year for this privilege of living where I live under the Landscape and Lighting District, I really think that should be made available, not only to myself, but to my other constituents within Lavenia Lighting and Landscape District. So, at this time, I'd like to present to the city, or drop it off, I'm not quite sure what it states, my California Public Records Act request.
Thank you. Mr. Holly? Mr. Holly, you'll follow up with this. All right, thank you for your presentation. Any other public comment?
I have, I have two hands raised online, if, if no one else is in person. Hugh Marquez, go ahead.
Hello, City Council. My name is Hugh Marquez. I live at 58 Crawford Way. I'd like to come today and ask that I know that there is talk about moving the skateboard park. I don't know if, I've been gone for a little while, and I understand there was a meeting a while back. One, one request I would like is to propose is that before the skateboard park is torn down or taken apart, that we have a location and we have construction on getting the land or the area ready for the skateboard park. I know the school is, is part of the school's need to have that, and it'd be nice if the school could help the city prepare the new location of our skateboard park. The other concern I have is I, are, most of our parks are using recycled water, and it concerns me when I go to parks like North Hampton, and there are, the grass isn't green, there are weeds, there are stickers, and it's sort of concerning because that's recycled water, and I'm trying to find, figure out, trying to find out why our parks that are using recycled water aren't in a better condition. Those are a couple of concerns I have. I think that the council and the mayor, you are all doing a very good job, but there are little things that could be improved. And again, I hope that the future of our skateboard park won't languish when it is moved. I'm sure it's going to be. The, I don't know if they've, if you, a decision's been made on where it's going. I have some places I would like, but I'm sort of just happy to make sure that we do have one in a timely manner when it is taken down. Thank you.
Thank you for your concerns, Mr. Holly. Is there a periodic update on progress for skateboard park?
Yes, certainly, Mayor. We plan, Hugh, we plan to take that issue up at our next council meeting on September 6th, so please join us and look out for the agenda ahead of time.
I'm sure I'll be there.
Thank you.
If we could have, soon we can go over and check out the lawn area at North Hampton Park, too, please. Thank you.
I have Justin Hamilton-Hole.
Okay.
Go ahead, Justin.
Hey, Emmy, and happy, welcome back from your summer break. This is August 15.
Yes.
I was just, I was just going to see if you guys do something about, there's a drinking water bouncing behind, near a skateboard, and there's a way, there's nothing over there. Yeah, I remember I was walking, I got there a long time ago, and there's no water, drinking water over there, and there's no, like, table over there. There's a, a near skateboard park behind that gym. So, is there a way you guys take a look, see if you can do something about, we're making nice there?
Well, I think we're moving the skate park, park to another location, so I think with the new location, we'll make sure that there has a drinking fountain, but that property, it's going to be relocated, so, yes, we'll find a new location for the water fountain.
Thank you so much.
You're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other speakers?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, very good. Well, move on in our agenda this evening. Oh.
Oh, I thought we did.
Just for public comment, if it's not on the agenda, if it's, yes, ma'am, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. I stay in American Canyon. I just have some concerns about the road. I don't know if the city is managing that road on Corvina Way now since we don't have a home association. The apartments back there, those cars are just speeding. The apartments back there, those cars are just speeding down the road. And I think safety is really important over there. So could we address that over there? And then we don't have any lights at night on Corvina Way. The lights are all blowed out.
Oh, well, another thing for city staff to look into, ma'am. Another thing for city staff to look into.
Okay. And then I have another concern about-
Would that be the streetlights? Would that be the streetlights?
The streetlights and the bushes all that's up there. No one comes and clean all that up. I'm handicapped, disabled. I go out there and try to cut some of it down and put them in the barrel just to kind of keep it looking nice on our road.
Well, thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Ma'am, just to clarify, Corvina is in Vintage Ranch in the apartment, the apartments over there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah?
Well, thank you for your comment, ma'am. Anybody else for public comment before I close it and move on? Seeing nobody else? We'll close public comment, move on with our agenda for the evening. Moving on to agenda changes. If there are no agenda changes, council, accept the motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council. We'll move on now to our public hearings. Proposed residential solid waste rate increase for enhanced services, SB 1383.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, community. Erica Almond Smith is Public Works Director. I have Derek Nelson here, General Manager, Recology also here. I'm gonna provide a brief presentation, like a 101, on, on what goes in what bin for tonight's meeting to start with and then get into the public hearing. If I can figure this out. Here we go. Once again, this public hearing is, is a state mandate to meet the SB 1383 compliance, which is recycling organics. I wanted to provide you a brief overview of why we're doing this. Organics like food scraps, yard trimmings, paper and cardboard make up half of what Californians dump into our landfills. The Senate Bill 1383 aims to reduce organic waste by seventy-five percent by 2025 and rescue for people to eat at least twenty percent of those currently disposed of surplus foods by commercial vendors by 2025 as well. There's more information available at the Cal Recycle Organics site, but we're gonna provide you a little slideshow or a demonstration here of what goes in what solid waste bins. Recology has already done this before because they're like, Sonoma County, Recology already has been doing organic recycling for quite some time. So they, we found their website, What Bin, What Bin app, and it provides you a really good tutorial of what goes in what bin. Because as of tonight, right now, we're still putting all our organics and food scraps and used cardboard, soiled cardboard and soiled paper into our landfill. But I don't know how I get the app to work. Do I have a help on this? It may not work. Trying to get onto the website here to get the app to work. Do I need to use the Chrome? I'll let you do it, okay. I could help if you don't mind.
Thank you. We need to get out of the presentation mode so we can be able to move to a browser. And then at this point, if you could enter in the website, you should be looking to.
Just the right one? Go back? This should be the top link. This one here? Yep. Okay. So as you can see, there's this What Bin app. You can download it onto your Android or your Apple devices. And you can type in here, for example, pizza box. And it gives you pizza box. And it says compost now. Before, it was not so easy. It would just say landfill, food scraps. If you picked in something like motor oil, it's gonna tell you where to take that properly. And it'll tell you down here, drop off at your hazardous, household hazardous waste facility. But this goes for the American Canyon. This is, I think, San Francisco's What Bin, but it's the What Bin app for every agency that has Recology hooked up to them and is also on the organics, on the organics. But it just, it's a nice app to know, because I don't always know. I didn't know you can do aerosol cans in your recyclable. That was something I learned today. Oops, aerosol cans. Something I learned doing this app myself. Empty ones can go in your recyclable bin. I, I just learned something today myself because I didn't know you could hairspray or old other, other items like that into the bin. I thought it was just landfill. So always something to be learned, but I recommend going to the What Bin on Recology's website and downloading that to your devices. So if you have a question, what goes where, you now know. And it'll tell you where, if it doesn't go in your bin, it's gonna tell you where to take it. Or you can call Recology up and ask them about it. But back to the slideshow. What goes in the green bin? Food scraps, uncoated soiled paper, cardboard products, uncoated soiled paper and cardboard products and yard waste. It gives you a nice image of everything. And again, if you don't know, go to that WhatsApp. What's in the gray bin? Your single-use plastics, your mask and rubber gloves, PPE, styrofoam, diapers and pet waste. And your recyclables blue bin, your plastic bottles, tubs and jugs, paper and cardboard and your metal. And empty aerosol cans. Our next step in this process tonight is to conduct a public hearing, Prop 218, determine the official number of written protest. We've received seventy-two, or seventy-three validated protests as of this evening. We need twenty-seven eighty-three plus one to go over the fifty percent threshold to protest this hearing out of the total number of property owners or customers authorized to vote, which is 5,567. If the resolution passes, we can move on. Day one tomorrow, August 17th, we'll reach out, start our public reach-out campaign for recycling organics to the community, continue working with city, Recology coordination. On day one, September 1st, this item passes, you can start putting your organics into the green bin. And the rate increase also falls on that same day. Because the good news is, we all have this already coming to our houses. You have the green, gray and blue bins. So you can just start putting stuff in on day one of September 1st. And if you think you might start reducing, seeing a reduction in your landfill bin because you're starting to compost or recycle, you can opt down to a smaller bin. We found that there's about five agencies that offer a twenty-gallon bin, but right now, the majority of American Canyon users are using the biggest bin. So there's two tiers before we even get to the smaller micro bin. So I think we should do an annual survey, check in to see how folks are doing, if it's, if that's another rate that should be added in the future. Right now, again, here's the visual of the residential solid waste around the area. Not all of these have been updated to reflect the increases. I think a good many of them have updated, but American Canyon, even with the proposed rate increase tonight, is still the lowest in all our surrounding areas, including many of the Sonoma County agencies. We start, we're starting an analysis because the next thing we need to do is work on our agreement with Recology and bringing that back to you in the near future. But we're analyzing the surrounding counties and other haulers that are around. And we're still quite, we're still the lowest, if, if, once you'll see that list when we provide the info in the future. Here's, again, a snapshot of the proposed rate increase this evening. Four dollars more on the small run-up to nine fifty-six on the monthly increase. And that's all we have for tonight's presentation. Derek's here to help assist with any detailed questions that you may have that are not-
Questions from council?
Clarification on Benicia's rate. Their sixty and ninety containers are lower than, than ours or as proposed. Can you clarify? I thought the staff report talked about it doesn't do weekly.
They're bi-weekly. No, they're every other week. So they're not on a weekly basis.
They aren't, it isn't the apples and apples comparison?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, no questions, but you had a What Bin. I'm gonna use that in my house because my family thinks I know it all when it comes to city stuff. And I'm just, go to that website, put that app on every kid's phone. Thank you. That's a very smart thing to do. I'll be using it myself.
I do want to offer that Derek did bring these great magnets. See, oop. Councilmember Washington's already received one.
I didn't get no magnet, so.
Because one of the, the visuals he provided was a magnet. I'm like, where's our magnets? So we're gonna have these magnets available to you and I don't know if we'll be sending them out to every customer. I'm just looking at Derek putting them on the spot right now.
Come to the microphone, please, sir.
Yep, sorry. Bring it up, Derek.
Yeah, so these are things that we've given out at like Meet Me in the Street and different kind of events, tabling events, but we'll leave a stack downstairs so customers that want to come by here or come by Recology can grab one.
Yeah, you should be like Oprah and just, you get one, you get one, hand them out to everybody, so.
Good magnet sticker.
I'm all the way on the TV, but I would appreciate it if you can leave one in my box. Because, you know, so actually recently, my husband and I got in trouble with Recology because we're now paying the twenty-five cents or the ten cents for these reusable plastic bags. I thought that we were paying that in order to make sure that these bags are recyclable. Apparently, they ruin the machines, so they are actually not allowed in the recycle bin, which is not something that would be intuitive. So I agree with Councilmember Oro. I'm definitely downloading that app because I'm not trying to get in trouble anymore.
A couple of questions I have. I'll get to me then, Councilmember Washington. A lot of food containers come in a clear plastic as a number one. Styrofoam, like you get a salad or packaged food, prepared food. And I don't see this on this chart here. That's a very common item in the store.
Do you want to speak to that one? The combustible-
It's like a, it's like a sandwich box, something. It's all, it's a clear plastic.
Plastic, a clear plastic clamshell?
Yeah.
That is, that's recyclable?
It is.
Yes.
Oh, okay. It doesn't show up here on the screen here, so. All right. I just want to know where I can place that. And the other was, I think it might be handy to think about or try a piece of it. Put the stickers available, because I got the old recycle one I got, it's got the sticker on it. It says, this is what can go in this bin, something like that. Because when you're out there with your, with your trash, it's not gonna run back to the refrigerator and grab my card. It's right here for me to look at. So that may, might be helpful to try out, see if it, that gains some traction.
Yeah, something that we can definitely look into and look at going out and looking at people's current stickers and seeing the state of them.
I appreciate the presentation. It's gonna be very informative. Councilmember Washington?
I withdrew my question because he already handed out the magnets. I was gonna tell him about the magnet. They were great. This is very good. Thank you. It's gonna be an education process and every tool we can use, they will help that along, the better. Thank you.
We'll open public comment on this matter now. Could you, sir, could you come to the podium?
Mayor, not to interrupt, but staff would prefer if we opened the public hearing. Staff would prefer if we actually opened the public hearing.
Okay, officially declared, using those words, the public meeting is open.
So the quick question is, I just want to know when will the micro boxes be available?
Are you referring to like the kitchen pails?
No, the smaller.
Yeah.
Right now, it's not available. It's not, not in our rate scheme. Are you already in a thirty-five gallon or thirty-two gallon?
So if we wanted to add another cart size, that's something that we have to inventory and that would have an impact across all of the rates. It's not just something- So if you go to a thirty-two, or what did you say, a twenty-gallon cart? That's ten gallons less than the current smallest cart. Right now, American Canyon has roughly 5,000 residential customers and 4,000 of those customers are in sixty-four or ninety-six gallon carts. So only twenty percent of them are even potentially willing to downsize. And just having that additional item that we have to inventory would have an impact across all of the rates. And so that's not something that is currently available. We would have to go through this again.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I need your name, please, for the record.
Larry Toes.
What was the first name?
Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Patty Kruger. I am quite concerned on the cost, the increased cost that is going to occur. This is a seventeen percent increase. Typically, annually, we get about a two to three percent increase in waste. If you look at all the increases that are occurring to our residents in American Canyon, you are talking, not only do you have the increase of water, but the increase of PG&E. By this seventeen percent increase, this includes two more trash payments per year. I'm not saying that there's not a necessary need to increase price for these actions, but you didn't show that there was an increase in price. You showed a fancy app that was already developed for another city that could easily be transferred into American Canyon. You didn't show why the costs are increased. And so to justify two more payments per month, per year, for trash for each of our residents, many of who are struggling financially at this time due to all the other rate increases, please really consider that as part of your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this matter?
I do have two hands raised online, if there's no one else in the room.
We'll take the ones online.
Okay. I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Teresa. So I, it's, we're planning to update our new can. There'll be, I bet you get a new garbage can or, I did this on, I put like, I put like some in the gray can and some in the blue can. We're planning to update our garbage can, new can for all CD. What's my question?
Good evening, Justin. The, the, the cans that you have are just fine. Unless you're looking for a replacement can, then you need to contact Recology and let them know you need a replacement for your cans. But right now, this, this, when it goes through, it'll just be, you'll just be moving one certain trash, like, like your organics or food into your yard waste bin, which is the green bin.
Okay. But year, a year ago, year ago, we do, year ago, the garbage company just switched the can a long time ago. And maybe we're looking at maybe four year, five year, so that's my question.
Are you asking the, they did a replacement on the, all the yard waste cans a few years back. They collected all the old ones and handed out new ones. Is that what you're asking, Russ, Justin?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor.
I don't know, we'd have to answer that. We're gonna replace, we're gonna get new cans, trade in the old ones for new ones?
Only if you need it.
Only if you need it. If you got a broken hinge or a cracked can or something like that, then that would be a justification for asking for a new one.
Or if you wanted to read or downsize your service level, then you'd get a new bin. Good point.
All right. Anything further, Justin?
I am good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I have Karen Fritz. Go ahead, Karen.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, council, mayor, public. My question in regards to the, the new program that we are going to be mandated to do. We put all of these materials into the yard waste container now. And it's gonna be sitting there. Is that not a potential to attract some wildlife or feral animals running about at night? As well as, on another note, once the can gets dumped, it's probably gonna be a pretty messy situation in there. it's probably gonna be a pretty messy situation in there. And I'm sure I'm not the only person that would do this, but uh, I don't like them stinking up and being all yucky like that, so I'll be having to clean it out. And then on that hand, there's the water usage. So it's kind of a catch 22 thing here for me. So do we have any, uh, any ideas on how we can, I don't know, how, how we can fix that?
Karen, thank you for the question and that is a, a common concern that we know we hear a lot. There's several things that you can do. First, uh, to answer the question about this material sitting in a cart for a week, you have to realize that it's currently sitting in a cart. It's just sitting in the gray cart, so that won't change. And so, you know, it'll decompose and rot at the same rate that it's doing in your current gray cart. As far as the, the smell and the, uh, you know, the residue left in your cart, a couple of things you can do is you can start by putting some green waste in the cart first before you start putting the raw food scraps on top of that, so that it has something to rest on, so that it's not just sticking to the bottom of your cart. Another thing that you can do is when you go grocery shopping, you know, ask for paper bags instead of plastic and you can put the material inside of a paper bag and that'll help, uh, keep your carts clean.
Well, as far as the, uh, waste being in the gray bin, it's generally within a plastic bag, so it's contained and not leaking. And I have put some things in the yard waste container on top of some, uh, clippings and things like that. And after it has set, it has still managed to become something that I have to dig out after it's been picked up. So this, that's my concerns on that note. I guess we'll just have to have a wait and see.
There's also.
I thought, I thought there were small containers that you could put on your kitchen counter. And don't some cities have those that you can put your, uh, food waste into?
They do, and those are things that are also negotiated into the rate, you know.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Well, thank you for your comment. Any other speakers?
I have Mary, oh, I did have Marion Sullivan. Yep, she came back on. I have Marion Sullivan. Go ahead, Marion.
Good evening, welcome.
Marion, you are muted.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, council members and public, I'm really concerned about this rate increase because I don't see how you can truly justify it. I mean fancy magnets are very nice, but you're still picking up the same amount of trash. It's just in a different can. Um, and, and so that really concerns me. And I'd like you to really think hard before you implement this rate increase. Also, on the postcard that we received in the mail, there was one rate increase. When I looked at the staff notes, there were two increases. So what are we talking about here? One or two? And you know, it's just one more thing. Another speaker said all of our, um, utilities have increased and this is just one more thing. And I think you should think very carefully before you charge everyone this amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good response.
If I may re-interject, now there's been two comments regarding the, the slideshow tonight. We actually have had two meetings before this. We had a meeting on May 3rd to discuss the, the need for the rate increase. We did a detailed presentation on that evening as well as the breakout. Um, June 7th is when council authorized the public protest hearing for this evening. And again, we detailed out the, the reason for the increase. The reason why we did a recap of what goes in what bin is because we thought you've already been through it several times in the community meeting, that tonight was just gonna be a recap of what should go where, should the item pass tonight and not meet the protest threshold. So I just wanted to clarify there, um, why we just showed what should go where and really summarized.
Just to follow on what Director Smithy says, the staff report and the resolutions themselves outline the, the history of the 1383 and all of the, uh, the explanation as to the change in the state mandates and the change in services and the costs that are involved behind all this. So it is included in the staff report and the resolution.
Also, Mr. Mayor, uh, as far as the same trash, so why the increase? I think it isn't, it's what you do with the trash, that, um, the, the new organics are being processed differently and that's where the additional cost is being generated to Recology. So that's, that's the reason for the increase. You're right. Otherwise, if you just moved from one bin to the other, it, it wouldn't mean anything, but, but there's additional costs on that composting.
Correct. And the cost to enforce.
Okay, any other for, public comment? Public hearing, please come.
Yes, I'm just concerned about the, um, the bugs and everything that's gonna be coming out the trash bins and coming in, attracting insects, rodents, birds, crows. So yeah, I'm just concerned about that.
As long as the container is properly closed and lidded, there shouldn't be anything, you know, ants can get in, but, you know, and that's something that happens now, but crows and the, the other, you know, raccoons and things like that, we should be okay with.
Okay. All right. Any other public comment?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, at this time I will close public hearing. We'll return to council for, for the discussion. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want, I just want to address some of the comments in the room. This, this is not something that has been, uh, brought on today. We've been discussing it for months. And almost a year, I'm, I'm looking at the staff report and there was a notice and action that we had to take in November of 2020, 2020, November 26, 2021, um, about this. And when I actually first saw the rate increases too, I was a little, um, upset. And then I had to understand it. And, uh, it's not a city decision, it's a state mandate. And the city is reacting to it in a way that I think is fair and reasonable and still provides the lowest cost in the region. If you look at that, we're, we're paying considerably less than others. And so I think it's a fair increase, given that it's mandated by the state, not mandated by the, uh, city of American Canyon. So this is not something that we're putting on our citizens. We're merely reacting to it. Uh, one of the things that helped sell me on this a little bit more, become more comfortable with it, if you look at the rates, and I, I don't know if it's easy enough to put up the rates right now so the audience can see, if you can put it on the presentation, uh, there's a slide of all the rates that you have. There was a chart where it's current, proposed. Do you have those at all after this one? It's, you have one where, yeah, there you go. All right. I'm a, I'm, the can size that my family has, uh, we have a household of seven at times and mostly five, if you can believe that. We're at 64 gallons. And we're not doing a 96, we're doing a 34 and we're paying at 38.71 every month. Based on what can actually, we can do with, by putting more into the green can, we will be able to go down to a 32 gallon size theoretically. I'm hoping to see how that happens, based on the What's Bin app, and actually lower my cost for the year. I mean, that's only because I'm in, in a bigger size. So there's an opportunity to lower the cost, but, you know, I, I, I think it's fair and equitable and I just want to be clear to the folks here that this is a mandate that we're reacting to. And not only that, we're actually adding an expense that you guys don't see, which is a full-time staff member coming back and, and complying with this state mandate, doing reporting, doing inspections, doing things of that nature. And that's what we, we will be paying for. And plus, I, I don't know if our representative from Recology can also talk a little bit about it, because there's people on the phone. You guys are doing different things on the, once you pick up this trash, you're also doing things differently that you weren't doing before. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So you hit the nail on the head. There's a lot of costs that aren't necessarily, you know, on the surface, it looks like we picked up that cart last week. We're picking it up this week. What's the difference? The composition of the material and the, uh, the cost to compost food waste as opposed to green waste is more costly for us as a hauler. We take this material to Jepson Prairie Organics in Vacaville. We're currently paying about $60 a ton and it's gonna increase to $75 a ton. Uh, the capital investments and infrastructure needed to build up these compost facilities, this is a new mandate for the state of California, so there's not enough capacity to, to currently do this composting. And so we're fortunate that we have a location that we can take it to, but it is much more expensive to compost it. It's a 60-day process as opposed to a one-day process. When you're taking something to the landfill, you're digging a hole, you're burying it, you're covering it for the day and you're not touching it again. With this compost, it's a 60-day process that you're gonna have to continually manage this material and infrastructure built up to, you know, to be able to compost it. And so those are a lot of the costs, as well as an increase in the franchise fee so that the city can pay for a staff member to help, uh, meet the other portions of the 1383 compliance.
Good point. The public comment is closed, sir. Sorry. Uh, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I, I'd like to echo Councilmember Oro's comments that, for me, the biggest point to look at is, is that comparison of rates. The fact that we're still significantly lower than, than other jurisdictions in the area despite this increase, which in and of itself would be a large jump. Uh, 17% increase is significant, but we're still below. The other point is relating to the state mandate. And what's frustrating to me is that the state mandate isn't just a target that we have to achieve. It's a target with all kinds of administrative obligations and inspections, which, you know, as far as I can see, just adds an administrative burden, when at the end of the day, the target ought to just be, did you, did you divert 75% of your organic waste? To me, that would be a much easier thing to document and you're done. And how you get there within reason should be at the discretion of the local jurisdiction. So part of the reason we have to increase the rate so much to hire this person is because of all the administrative procedures that are, that are built into the law. And that's a little frustrating, but, uh, there's not a whole lot we can do other than point out it's a little frustrating and hope somebody does something. But as a practical matter, we, I feel we're pretty much obligated to, to consider this rate increase, recognizing it's unfortunate, but that we're still substantially lower than other jurisdictions and, and that's important to consider. Thank you.
You know, the, uh, certainly the discussion on the rate increase certainly brings it forward. The, uh, it's just the California state mandate, SB 1383, says we have to meet these requirements. And, uh, and I will summarize it again while I'm hearing from my council colleagues on it. There is an increased burden on, uh, the waste disposal operations, whether it's Recology or whatever waste hauler it is, about operations, because you just can't compost this thing like you would any other green waste. It has to have a special attention to the, uh, composition of it and how you have to turn it over. The reason they're doing this is when you, uh, take organic waste, food scraps, things like that, to a landfill, cover it up, seal it up, it's anaerobic digestion and it creates methane gas, because it can't decompose the way it would if it was, had access to air. That's why methane gas is one of the most serious, uh, components of, uh, climate change. So that's why we're having to reduce it. I wouldn't see, be at all surprised if over time they don't increase the mandate for more recycled waste in it. Here's something that's helpful also. As, uh, Councilmember Oro pointed out, if you look at how you distribute, how you discharge all your, uh, household waste, you may in fact be able to get into a smaller can. You know, I did that years ago, got into a 32 gallon from a 64. How did I do that? Well, one thing, uh, there's an organization in Napa Valley called Master Gardeners. They're trained through UC Davis and it's how to plant your garden. One thing they do every year, it had prior to COVID, they did a composting section and even give you a free bin that you can put in your backyard if you have the space for it. Works for homeowners like myself. I've been doing it for over 40 years and I don't put food scraps in it. That's a no-no in my house. If it's a vegetable, if it's a fruit, if it's plant cutting, if it's leaves, if it's something I can chop it to a smaller size, I put it in, uh, my compost bin. And I still use it because I'm not gonna put everything in my green waste now, because that's very good fertilizer for my plants in my house. And, uh, uh, my wife even takes it over to, uh, the community garden to help grow her plants over there. So there's a strategy here for getting into a, a lower, uh, cost point on that. Look at what you're throwing away in your recycle bin now and your trash can. Wow, you know, it's, see, good point for me. Like, we get a lot of stuff that's in a plastic box. What do you call those things? The clamshell box, right? The clear plastic ones. Well, I've been throwing those in the, uh, trash can for years. But that can go in the recycle bin. So that takes up less space. Now I got more room to put in, uh, other disposables. That's why I think it's, uh, to me, I see this as an education program as well, for people to understand. That if you go through, uh, and look at, that's why I like sticker on the trash can, because my old recycle one had one on it that said, oh, that's what goes in. I'm going out with the garbage. I can take this out of the bag, put it there. This one goes there and this one is much smaller. That goes in the gray bin. So that could be helpful for us. I just think, uh, uh, it's a way of restructuring how we dispose, dispose of household waste. And there's a benefit to it on a number of sides. I think the rate increase is, uh, I understand. People don't like to see rate increases, neither do I. On the other hand, we have to comply with state regulations and that's gonna require, uh, additional cost to the, the waste hauler and it's gonna, uh, have additional administrative cost to the city to make sure that we're compliant. So I think that's, uh, that's where I'm at. Further comment from council? Okay, well, let's go back to the top here and see where we are.
If there's no other comments and the public hearing is closed and the
Yes.
number of protests is substantially lower than the 50%, with all that in mind, I will then make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, California, approving a residential solid waste rate increase.
Second.
Most of second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you all, council. Very good.
Thank you, Derek.
Moving on in our agenda. We are now to our business items. Uh, item number 13, City of Canyon, City of American Canyon Local Roadway Safety Plan.
Good evening, again. This evening we're giving the, bringing back the Local Roadway Safety Plan, a final draft for your review and comments. Um, I have Catherine Kleinschmidt in person tonight, uh, senior transportation engineer from GHD, who'll provide you a recap of the, what's transpired to date and, uh, give you a, a brief overview of the projects that are recommended for prioritization. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome. There's the button there that helps lower the, uh, Jen, she around? Nope. There you go.
There they are.
There you go, okay. We adjusted dias, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. It is my pleasure to be here, uh, in person. You might have remembered I presented, uh, this Local Roadway Safety Plan in July on the 19th for some feedback from you all and we've kind of incorporated that and did some additional meetings that I'm gonna go over tonight. So the agenda, let me put on my glasses. We're just gonna go over the background, what is a Local Roadway Safety Plan and then the engagement we have done throughout the development of this plan. We're just gonna hit on some of the collision analysis. We did a lot more detailed in previous presentations for the city and then where we're headed with, uh, you know, recommending safety projects and getting those essentially funded and implemented. So this is the LRSP Local Roadway Safety Plan Process Wheel. Uh, throughout this plan, we did develop our Stakeholder Working Group, which was our leadership, engaged the city, uh, the police department, the schools, other regional partners. I'll get into those coming up. And then we looked at the safety data, as well as we looked at emphasis areas where we wanted to focus in improving safety and different strategies and then priorities and getting those incorporated. And then this is, uh, a plan that's typically got a formal update every five years. And we're also complementing the state's Strategic Highway Safety Plan. The five E's shown there is what the state has and they like, uh, to not only have you look at engineering counterme- at engineering countermeasures, but also look at your emergency response, your enforcement efforts, education, and emerging technologies. This is a requirement for the H-SIP Cycle 11, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. It is now, the call is out, and actually, you have until September 12th to submit an application. So, this is a requirement for that funding program that comes out every two years. So, we did a lot of engagement with this plan. We engaged the Stakeholder Working Group that consisted of the city, your police department, Public Works, as well as, you know, some folks from your communication side, Napa County, with State Route 29, kind of bifurcating your city being a main route right through. We did engage also Caltrans District 4. The police department, the fire department were engaged, NVTA, they are leading that project for State Route 29, engaged them, as well as Napa County Bicycle Coalition and your school districts. We had two meetings this year, one in May and one in June, and we took all that feedback and incorporated that into the plan. There's also been other meetings. The city had the Traffic Calming Workshop on May 19th, where they actually did plug the Local Roadway Safety Plan, and we had a survey that was put on that project website for input on, you know, the traffic calming guidelines right now, and what kind of improvements people would like to see. So, that's something that'll be coming also out of that survey that was on the website. As I mentioned, I presented this plan in a lot more detail on the 19th to you, as well as I went to Planning Commission a couple of weeks later, on July 29, 28, excuse me, and we got feedback from them. And we took all that and kind of put that into the plan, and some of the feedback was on State Route 29. We even emailed Caltrans and let them know, you know, there's some areas on this that are safety concerns, so we're trying to get that information to the right stakeholders. Here's the website for the project. We had it live for public comment from May 11th through June 29th. We had an interactive map where people could pinpoint their concerns. There's a, you know, showing of all the different concerns here on this slide, and it's for vehicles, or bike, or pedestrians, or school-related. So, we gathered all those comments. They are also summarized in the appendix in the plan, as well as we had a survey that was live on the same time. We did put the draft plan also on the website for feedback, as well as we emailed it to the stakeholders, and we got two public comments and five stakeholder comments on the draft plan. So, this is pretty impressive. I've done a lot of these LRSPs with other agencies, and you guys are getting engagement that's similar to city of like 60,000. I'll give you an example, Petaluma had a very similar engagement amount. They had around, just under, actually, just over 300 comments. Here, with the city around 20,000 population, you're getting, you know, 292 interactive map comments, as well as 90 survey responses. So, I do feel like this has been very successful in getting some feedback during the development. And this is showing you a heat map of where we got a lot of public comments. Elliott Way was kind of highlighting between Benton Way and American Canyon, that's kind of a parallel route to State Route 29, that kind of goes up to the school district area on Benton Way. There was a lot of concerns with speeding, people running the stop signs there, as well as James Way between Wilson Way and Donaldson. Also, we noticed Wetlands Edge Road was also, we had a lot of comments on that one, Donaldson Way, that crossing at State Route 29 in that area, Newell Road and Melvin. So, we got a lot of comments, the majority of the comments were driving-related. So, I'm not gonna show all the slides I did, because I know I showed you a lot last month, but I just, this is just an overall heat map. We did evaluate the past five years. That's a requirement of a Local Roadway Safety Plan, because it's gonna feed into the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. And overall, in your city limits, you had 671. The majority were at the intersection for State Route 29, as well as your city intersections were also. So, those are the areas of focus. You can see the hotspots are along various intersections, American Canyon, Donaldson Way, Poco, Rio Del, Napa Junction, as well as the different corridors within the city, American Canyon, Newell Road. So, we really wanted to focus on those in the development of the plan. And just looking at just the pedestrian-to-vehicle collisions, we're noticing they're on American Canyon Road, State Route 29, Newell Road. So, we're looking at the trends within those collisions, trying to understand where the majority of them are occurring, and they're at your crosswalks, at your intersections. So, this plan is focused on those kind of countermeasures. And bicycle collisions, showing a similar trend with American Canyon Road, some along State Route 29, as well as Donaldson Way. So, we're looking at, you know, what kind of trend, and there was actually a lot of different violations with the bicycle collisions. The fatality was improper turning that was on State Route 29, and then the severe injury was due to a violation with someone not yielding the right-of-way to the traffic signals and signs. So, the safety projects, so last time I presented, I did present all the work the city's doing, because there's just a lot of safety projects Erica's team is already implementing in this city. So, the purpose of this plan is really to complement those projects, you know, we're not trying to mitigate what is already in the plans. So, I'm not gonna go over all the American Rescue Act projects that you guys have in the city and the ones I presented. I'm just gonna show you on the ones that, the new projects we're looking at targeting and moving forward with the plan. But that's all included in the plan, all the past safety efforts, what the city is doing, as well as the education programs and enforcement. So, looking at the priority locations based on the data and community feedback, stakeholders, I'm not gonna mention State Route 29, because that whole thing lit up at all the intersections. And we, and there's already a project in place. For folks that don't know, NVTA is leading up efforts, and they're working on the PID, the Project Initiation Document, to essentially find what is the alternative for this corridor, and looking at different alternatives. So, that is going through that process, and it'll eventually go through the project approval and environmental documentation. But just looking at the city roadways, we're noticing the intersections at Flosden and Daniel were popping, American Canyon and Broadway and Silver Oak Trail, American Canyon and Newell and Flosden, Rio Del Mar and Los Altos, Flosden Road and Canyon Creek, Flosden and Villa Bellagio, as well as American Canyon Villa Friense. Segments was Newell Road, American Canyon, Paleolook Road, American Canyon, again, all the different sides of it, Flosden Road, Silver Oak, and Benton Way. We did wanna make sure we included the roadways that serve the schools. There's not only specific countermeasures at certain locations, there's also systemic. Systemic is countermeasures you can implement on similar type of facilities that have similar high-risk characteristics, and when you do systemic implementation, you basically address city in a proactive way, not reactive. So, instead of just addressing where you're having your collisions, you can implement various countermeasures in a proactive way at locations that are similar. So, we looked at systemic recommendations, and some of them are on the engineering side, you know, looking at how to get the bike infrastructure installed, as well as, you know, adding sidewalks, closing up those gaps, pedestrian crossing enhancements, looking at, you know, updating your pedestrian countdown timers, your push buttons, as well as implementing leading pedestrian interval-by-ear signalized intersections. That gives the pedestrians a couple, usually five seconds before the vehicles have the right-of-way. As well as, you know, education. The city's already doing a lot of education and kind of complementing that and continuing it. They did the critical mass, the bike safety. They also do, you know, helmet-type safety, the child seats. So, looking at how to keep those up, as well as speed enforcement and management, that's so important. So, making sure the police department has the right resources to continue that. And then, other engineering countermeasures, I think we were mentioning was ways to have the bikes more noticeable at those conflict areas with the green conflict paint, as well as bike boxes at the appropriate intersections. Some of the countermeasures, these are ones that will feed into H-SIP. There's ways to upgrade all your signal hardware, and looking at, you know, ways to make it more noticeable with the retroreflective borders, as well as making sure your signal indication size are all 12-inch, some of them are deficient in 8-inch. So, looking at all your signals and updating your hardware mounting, that's all fundable through H-SIP. You can even add more heads, as well as looking at your signal timing and making sure that that is appropriate when you do start adding a leading pedestrian interval. You'll have to modify the signal timing, so looking at implementing that at your signalized intersections. I do mention State Route 29. Those signals are, you know, are under Caltrans jurisdiction. I know they implemented some adaptive signal timing, so just making sure they're updated if there's any congestion or issues, which I saw very heavily with the southbound. So, I know there's some ways they're still trying to improve that, but ways that we can kind of, you know, capture it in the plan. As well as looking at your priority intersections, making sure your site distance is provided at Flosden and Daniel, as well as enhancing your crosswalks, American Canyon and Villa Friense, as well as Flosden and Daniel, as well as looking at enhancing the pedestrian crossings on Benton Way at Chaucer and Huntington. And then, looking at that intersection of Rio Del Mar and Los Altos, and evaluating if a different traffic control would be appropriate, possibly a mini roundabout. And then, segment analysis, we also got into, and lighting was very important on State Route 29, as well as looking at the roadways that we had a lot of run-off-the-road collisions, looking at, or they're hitting objects, so looking at how to delineate those objects close to the right-of-way on American Canyon and Flosden, and then bringing some awareness to the speeding with some variable speed warning signs on the various segments within American Canyon, and where you might have the speed changes or horizontal curves, as well as improving your median noses at American Canyon Road, at Newell, and then looking at ways to present, prevent, excuse me, the vehicles from crossing center. You could do a centerline rumble strip on Paleolook Road, and then looking at how to enhance, there's currently barriers on American Canyon Road that are being hit, so looking at replacing that in various areas with guard rail treatments, especially where you have a drop-off. So, there's also other countermeasures in this plan for all the E's, complementing the education efforts, but you could also look at, you know, engaging your regional partners and ways to kind of educate traffic safety. I think the city's also doing Safe Streets, and they've got a motto, we heart safer streets. Yes. So, you know, and taking that pledge. There's emerging technologies you can implement. Some of those are upgrading your controllers, so you can do different smart city practices with your traffic signals, as well as bicycle detection, enforcement, you know, just complementing the efforts. Chief Greenberg was part of this plan as a stakeholder. He gave great feedback. We were talking tonight, and I think school's starting tomorrow, so he's got his work cut out for him, you know, just to continue that enforcement, especially at those areas where we're gonna have a lot of pedestrians and cyclists, and maybe some speeding, and then emergency response with this plan. We want to make sure whatever's implemented, that's not gonna impede the emergency responders. And so, as I mentioned, it is a typical formal update every five years, but you can track the metrics as you go, and if you see needed changes, you could start to track those as a living document. And thank you for your time, and I'll open it up, I guess, for questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Very detailed, very comprehensive. You mentioned school's starting, as in tomorrow, so it's gonna be rather an intense three days. I like it that they start in the middle of the week, because it makes for a shorter week, and then settle down by Monday, things have some semblance of what's gonna be normal. I do think this, I take this as an opportunity to get connected with particularly like bicycle pedestrian safety, with the schools, particularly the PTO, PTAs at the elementary schools, as an opportunity to some handout information with that, particularly with bicycle safety programs, you know, a helmet. I do recall one accident we had, the young man was riding the bicycle on the wrong side of the road, you know, and I did connect with the car. Fortunately, not a serious injury, because the car was going very slow. But I think there needs to be certainly a program, I'm sure they're available out there, it says, these are the rules when you ride a bicycle. You have to do the same thing a car does, be on the right side of the road, you know, yield to traffic, stop at stop signs. Had a great public safety officer years ago at the middle school, and she'd be there at the curb when the kids are leaving. Guy's on his bike, wait a second, where's your helmet? Get off that bike, you're gonna walk that bike home. You know, a helmet program would be another one. And somehow, to make wearing a bike helmet cool, because that's what a lot of kids that age are all about, and if you can get the peer pressure to work around to, we wear a helmet, because it's a cool thing to do, how we arrive at that, I think would be a good program. So, I'm thinking, school's starting, it's gonna be a great opportunity to connect with bicycle safety, pedestrian safety. The other one asked is, you're probably aware in your study, one of the big concerns on Donaldson and 29, it's coming from the east side to the west side, and a lot of parents are really concerned, and I fully validate it. It's a dangerous intersection. I don't want my kids crossing that highway by themselves. So, I wonder if there's an opportunity to be looking here at, say, a crossing guard or something that might help that. Maybe that could be something that'd be pulled at those meetings with the schools and the parents, say, what would help this for you? There's a way of validating that. And I'd like to see some, with those efforts put into that, some data collected on it, just more from a quality assurance, quality management perspective. Between this effort, what response did we get? So, we keep finding a way that works better. But thank you for your report. With that, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, thank you for the report. Couple of questions. One is, how will we integrate these findings into the SR29 project that's underway? I mean, the Project Initiation Document is essentially complete, they're now looking for the environmental review. Will we, is, you know, how will we integrate what's being recommended into that project?
I think a lot of the items are already in the report, the reasons why we're going with the PID document, except for this document, the safety, we'll also back trying to get additional funding. I think we'll be able to use this to help show, we have data collected in the heat map, and the comments from the public will help us leverage additional grant funding, because that's what we're, that's what we're gonna be on the hunt now, is to build that project, and probably in multiple phases.
Okay. And then, I think, I'm just parroting what you just said, but the whole point behind this is really to set the stage to say, we've justified hardware upgrades for our signals that cost money, so now we have access to grant funds that are available, so that we can then get the money, make the upgrades, and so on.
Yes, that's the goal here, is that this is a requirement for just the H-SIP funds, but I see this probably mounting that you need to have safety plans, like, they always ask for bike projects, do you have a bike plan approved? Or adopted, or a pedestrian plan? Now, we have a citywide roadmap to say, we need to prioritize these projects.
Because I guess, in my mind, is it the leading pedestrian interval thing, which I had to actually go online to figure out what the heck that was, but our signals don't have the ability to, you know, it seems like the hardware or the brains of our signals ought to be able to accommodate that now, or not?
We would have to check, but I believe some of the controllers need to be updated. So, that is part of the cost, that will be covered with the H-SIP grant.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is an exercise to basically justify why we need to upgrade things, which then segues into the grant that funds it. Perfect, okay, thank you.
Some of the issues we've had with the signals on 29 is Caltrans didn't note that the equipment was outdated, some of it was putting it mildly, but yeah, sure is a need to upgrade. Any other comment from council? Council ready for public comment? Public comment on this matter is open.
I have Hugh Marquez. Go ahead, Hugh.
Go ahead, Hugh.
Hello. I have a couple of questions. My first question is, on September 12th, will the city be putting the application in for the grant funding? I know that that was mentioned, that it was due by September 12th to put it in. And my question is, is that the plan right now to put in for that grant? The other question I have is, we have as many, I did put in, I did put a couple of comments in to the LSRP about our street on Elliott, the speeding. And I have two comments on that. When we put those in, what type of remedies were considered? I know that Wetlands Edge has some, some speed barriers on the road. And the question is, is that a precursor to a way of leaving some of our speeding throughout the rest of the city? I know that some of that's a trial basis or it was a trial basis to see how it would work. It seems according to Chris James, who I've talked to many times, it seems to have helped the speeding issues on, in their area. And I'm curious if that will be a future for the rest of the city. The police resources, I guess I would comment this to the city council. I know that we have a police department that does a very good job in what they do. And I hope that as our city grows, we will increase our police resources to accommodate so they are not stretched thin. That's another question. Hopefully, that will, with this LSRP, that will be brought up or thought of. The other question is, we talked about the lighting and stuff, and Mayor Garcia did mention about how Caltrans didn't seem, the light at South Kelly Road by the dump seems to be a continual problem when it rains or whatever. And I'm trying to figure out if the city or who, who is responsible to make Caltrans to update that. That seems to be a continual issue, and of course, that backs into our city and causes much problems. So, I'm hoping that that with this LSRP and with the comments that the citizens gave and the ideas that we can, that the public works and the city will be able to help remedy some of the traffic issues, speeding issues that are going on in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on this matter. Bring it back to council for further discussion. There is a resolution at the end if we show desire.
If there are no further comments, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, California, adopting a local roadway safety plan.
I'll second. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the work you did on this. So, it's an extensive piece of work done. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
It'll be very helpful. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we have now item number 14, adopt a labor agreement, salary schedules, and related documents.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the last item before you tonight. It is for the adoption of labor agreements, salary schedules, and related documents as required by PERS. So, this item has five resolutions. They accomplish the following. The first one authorizes the city manager to execute labor agreements with the members of Teamsters Local 315 General Unit and of the Teamsters Local 315 Mid Management Unit. Second, the resolution authorizes the city manager to make corresponding changes to the unrepresented compensation program. Third, adopting a updated salary schedule for fiscal year 2223. Fourth, to revise the recruitment and retention strategic plan and performance management guidelines, policies, and procedures for at-will managers. And finally, amend the classification plan to revise the deputy public works director classification specification. The materials supporting all of these recommendations have been provided in the packet. There is an extensive class and compensation study. I'm happy to take any questions or go over any of the sections if you are so inclined.
Thank you. Well, council, we've had an opportunity to look at this and discuss it, and it seems that we have come to an agreement. Any further discussion needed or questions?
I don't have any questions about this. I think, you know, it's exciting, A, to have a five-year contract, and B, to have it resolved this early in the, in the season. So, I'm happy with that. I would just like to throw out for the council's consideration, something to start thinking about between now and the next cycle is exploring how we can work with our represented units to talking about creative ways of integrating performance and compensation. Because I do think that it's an opportunity for a win-win in which employees might get paid a little better because we're actually getting more done. And the residents obviously benefit because their tax dollars are getting done more efficiently. So, that would be my only request is that we think about it, and if council supports it, that we can come back and start talking about a process. Again, the good news is, it would be something that would integrate into the next cycle some five years from now.
Yeah, that's, well, as I was mentioning with the bicycle safety study, with the traffic safety study, you know, a quality assurance component is how you get it. I was involved with that for a number of years in my professional world. You know, what measurements are you going to put in terms of effectiveness of operations? Break it down into smaller components and take one, look at it for a while, and move on if it's improving.
Certainly, performance indicators would be a key element of that because you want objective. I mean, one of the things that have been argued against over the years is it tends to be a subjective thing. So, I would want to be looking at those kinds of elements that are objective.
Usually, QA is objective. You have criteria you have to meet.
Exactly. So, those are the kinds of things. I know there's a lot of pitfalls to it, but I think if you look at it from a more objective perspective, it can be beneficial for everybody. So, that's why I think it's worth our consideration.
Well, excellent. Fantastic work you've done. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like to add also, before the council takes action, that Scott Corey is here. He was very much part of the process on working with this. But for the employees watching at home, on YouTube or on our other mediums, I just wanted to express my appreciation to the employee groups who really took time to work with us and collaborate and make this an effective and efficient process and appreciative of that process with them.
Well, our thanks go out as well. Thank you.
So, if you'd be so inclined, we're looking for adoption of the five resolutions. Happy to help you facilitate that, however it works for you.
Do we need public comment first?
Need public comment, yes. Anybody from the public?
I have no hands raised.
Anybody present wishing to comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed.
There's no further deliberation. I'll start on the first one. To make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021, it should be 22?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Directed.
Resolution Number 2022, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, adopting the memorandums of understanding with the Teamsters Local 315 General and Mid Management Units.
I'll second. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Moving on to the next one.
And I think the next resolution is actually an amendment that's sitting on our desk. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. So, I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-76. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, revising the unrepresented compensation program for at-will managers, confidential, and part-time seasonal employees.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Competition. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
I'll make the next motion. I'd like to move Resolution Number 2022, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, approving the fiscal year 2022, 2023 salary schedules.
I'll second it. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
One moment. Okay. Okay. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
And I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, revising the recruitment and retention strategic plan and the performance management guidelines, policies, and procedures for at-will managers.
I'll second. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas. I apologize.
It's okay. I'm a yes, and I'll do the last one. Resolution number, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2022, next in order. A resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, modifying the City of American Canyon's fiscal year 2022, 2023 classification plan.
I'll second. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. And I can close this item. Moving back here, we're now ready for management staff oral reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually don't have any updates for you this evening. Thank you.
Updates this evening? We'll move on to mayor, council comments, committee reports, and then we'll take up future agenda items. Councilmember Joseph, anything further to add to your report?
I don't believe so, but I do have some follow-up questions on the next cycle.
We'll take care of the council reports.
Or if I can interject, actually, I do want to highlight one point out of the Napa Valley Transportation Authority meeting, and that was, we approved the O-BAG third cycle, which included a million dollars that was expected to kind of go back to the Green Island Road project that we had deferred for the Vine Trail. But one of the new projects was a $2 million allocation to go towards the environmental review associated with the 29 project through American Canyon. Now, they estimate that they need 3 million, but at least we've got two out of the 3 million, and there's a number of places that we can pick up the extra million. But I wanted to report to the council that that transformation of the 29 corridor is moving along. It isn't just a study that lands on a shelf. They are moving it forward. It is one of their new priorities now that Sausal Junction is, is under construction. So, that's the good news.
Very good. Councilmember Washington, anything to report?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Councilmember Oro?
Nothing to add, sir.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the North Bay League meeting in Petaluma along with you and Councilmember Joseph. Councilmember Joseph did an amazing job summarizing in his report, so I'm not going to take up any time doing that. But I want to remind everyone, if you haven't signed up yet, sign up for Botchy in Yountville as a fundraiser for the North Bay Division. Please feel free to contact me if you need assistance or just contact Nancy directly. And that would be it.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, that was a great meeting there in Petaluma. And you're now vice president, first vice president.
Not yet. At the league conference.
At the league conference.
So, I'm second vice president, and then at the league conference, hopefully, I become vice president.
That will take place on September 7th or 8th, I think. Yes.
Yeah.
No, I just was commenting, that was an excellent presentation on how they put together homeless shelter and managed that in Petaluma. And it just underscores again some of the comments that several of us have made and myself having worked with that type of network in, with Community Action Napa Valley. We had the homeless shelter in Napa for many years and the family shelter as well. But they were very much on how the program was managed, how clients were selected, adherence to the protocols, the treatment program they were in. And their manager, she was, she was incredible. She was one of those who just takes everybody's task, makes sure you're checking in, okay, in a friendly way. And if you're not, okay, you know, this is the program. This is what you need to be doing, and make sure he's tracking that. And it just points out to the success of that. Now, the comments this evening, we certainly take those with great consideration of the importance of those concerns that we have, and we share them. I'd like to point out, this last meet-me-in-the-street was incredible. It just keeps growing in momentum each time Valerie and company put that together. And I know there's an awful lot of volunteers to thank for that. It's a huge success, speaks very well of American Canyon. And because it's not just American Canyon residents that come, we know they're coming from out of town. I mean, people from Vallejo, people from Napa, people from Fairfield, Vacaville. One way or another, people are hearing about this thing, and it's just a huge success. And I thought, wow, that deserves some sort of commendation there somehow. I mean, you know, it's applause. Lot of great work going on there. And I know we have our city staff there doing their presentations. A great way for folks to connect with their questions, what are we doing about, fill in the blank, you know? How can I fix, fill in the blank? Just one, well, one thank you going out. Residents there on Amarillo and Sierra Vista, there's a pothole. Got old Mr. Holly on that, and it's fixed. Thank you, Felix, for your crew and all that. The appreciation goes out. So, we do make a connection with some of the more down-to-earth needs in the community, and people value it. And that's, that's a great way to connect with them as well. All right, so, that would be my report. Anticipated earlier items, or was that what you were, it's in, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, and it's mostly reports, just either an update or to get back to us. Some months ago, we asked for an update on grants that we, that we have received that are still pending or just what's the status. Also, some update on the key performance indicators, the work order management system that we have in place relating to the See, Click, Fix program. And then lastly, I noticed that our financial transparency portal hasn't been updated since February, so it'd be good to update that. So, it's mostly just some reports that could be sent as a written report or a quick management update report in the near future. But just wanted to remind everybody that those are still pending as far as I know, and other council colleagues may have some follow-ups that they're looking forward to, but those are the ones I'm interested in. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else from council? Yep. Well, council colleagues, we have completed our duties for the evening. We've completed our agenda, and we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not bad for 8:30. Very good.
That's pretty good.
Mark this date down.
Eight, twenty-one.
That's right.
Twenty-one. Eight. Um...